Testing, check, check, check.
From the interstate. So the crane is working to set the steel. And then we're gonna pan over now to the right. And now you can start to see the field house coming into play. So this is the gym. And then this will be the road that drives around to the back of the gym. And this will be student parking, right through here. And then, um, field house. And we're gonna pan the camera around a little bit more to see the field house. So now you can see it a little bit closer. You will enter the field house around this side and that'll be where concessions are. And then there'll be a lower level down here and we'll pan the camera one more time. So now we can see a little bit more. And we see the lower level to the concession area. And this is the upper level. And on the lower level is where you'll enter out onto the football field. And this area in the back over here will be the home side. And the area closest to the interstate will be the visitor's side. So now we're inside the building. We're in the main corridor and we're looking towards the front entry. So this is a two-story atrium that we were showing you from outside. And we have this great stone wall insides. We've brought the stone inside and out. And then over here, you will be able to look down into that area. So administrative will be over here to the left. And then the HOSA area will be to the right. So if we walk through this entry here, we're gonna see the large CTE area. And now we're inside that area. So you can see inside this, this is a big room that's gonna be, um, HOSA with classrooms that will empty onto it. And the far area will be the criminal justice area. And you can see all the activity that's going on. They've got drywall deliveries. We have some drywall on the walls. We've got lots of utilities going in. We have, uh, piping for plumbing. We've got conduit and HVAC going in and the sprinkler piping. So lots of work. And then this is a view of a typical classroom. So you'll see the drywalls on and it's ready to be prime painting. And they're gonna start painting that next week. And again, you can see some of the utilities, the HVAC sprinkler lines and so forth. And then now we're on the second floor. So we're looking down into the first floor. You can see the skylight here. This is the main artery of the school. And then we have hallways that go to both the left and the right side. So if you're standing here and you turn around, that's where you would see that stone wall that we talked about. And then further and beyond, if you look straight out, this will be the upper level of the learning commons area. And so now we are in the learning commons area. So this is the ramp where you come up. This area in here is the learning commons. And we have some overlooks here and you'll have a cascading stair coming down. And then you can see the natural light coming in. This will be really nice area to study and so forth. And then now we are over into the gym. So these bar joists have been set. And they're tying off the steel. And, um, you could see how pretty it was today. So this is, um, this is the nice new gym area. And those are all the photographs that I have for you. So I'll open it up if anybody has any questions or wants me to go back and discuss anything further.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. West. Does anyone have any questions for her?
Janine.
Janine.
The, uh... Echo, sorry. In the field house area.
Uh-huh.
Is there a Janine or is that, is the, the front of that gonna be closed in with the solid wall?
Uh, hold on. There is a, there's a two-story. And let me go back to that. Okay, so, um, so this is two stories and it's open out to the football field. So the lower level is, um, uh, restrooms that we have designated for the visitor's side. And that will also be, um, some storage down there. And, um, on the upper level, uh, actually, and also the locker rooms for the visitor's side. And then on the upper level, we have restrooms that will be for the home side and the concession area, wrestling room, that kind of thing. So what you would see from the school side is you'll just see the one level. But from the stadium side, you'll see two levels. Does that answer your question?
Okay, any further questions for Ms. West? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. West. Uh, we appreciate the update. We'll go ahead then at this time and, um...
Can I ask you a question? Do I need it? You just, um, you do?
Yes, yes.
Um, is it okay to take tours now? Can, I bet several people...
Um, I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to check and see. Yeah, um, if you couldn't hear, uh, uh, Ms. Thomas was asking about the, uh, ability to take tours. And, uh, we'll have to check on that. The, the site is rather wet, but we need to just check with the contractor about the social distancing requirements. But we'll, we will, we will find that out for you. Okay, any, any more questions? All right, let's move then next to, um, an update on the 2020 graduation. And I'm gonna ask Dr. Palmer, uh, to present on the screen here in just a minute to bring us up to date. But I want to take this opportunity, uh, to say a very special thanks, um, to our high school principals and to our focus group students from each of our four high schools who participated, um, in the, the focus group activities at two different levels, who generated the initial, um, options that was narrowed down. And then we do have a survey that is live, uh, for our seniors taking place now. Um, I want to also thank Dr. Stephen May, who has worked with us, uh, to, uh, record a segment, uh, on, um, on the video that we, we presented to our, our students, uh, to help explain, uh, the, the choices. And, uh, so having said that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Palmer, who will lead us through, um, all of the, the things that have taken place. And I want to say a special thanks to Dr. Palmer, who has worked very hard. Uh, and we've all put a lot of time into this, but especially Dr. Palmer, as he has led the effort with our principals and our focus group students. So, Dr. Palmer, thank you. And, uh, go ahead and let's, uh, let's hear from you.
Yes, sir. Well, it's been my pleasure. Thank you, Dr. Cox, and thank you to the board. Um, I am, I am very pleased to, uh, talk to you about this. I think there's been a lot of great work that's been done. Um, so about, around mid-April, we asked our principals to put together a group of seniors to ask them for the seniors' thought about graduation, what they would like and what their thoughts were about what they'd like to see happen. So our, our principals did that. They met with their seniors the week of the 21st in April. Participants, um, ranged anywhere from four to eight students in a, in a group. Uh, and they generated several different ideas, which we, we met with the principals and, and wrote down what we felt like it was that the seniors expressed to us that they wanted for graduation. At that time, we set another date for April the 28th, where we met with 16 seniors. Those 16 seniors, uh, all met together with me and the principals and, and Dr. Cox. And we, we hashed out the details about the options that we felt like were presented by the, by the seniors and to kind of bring everybody together. Um, the focus group did generate four basic ideas. Uh, the four ideas were the Bristol Motor Speedway event, uh, crossing the finish line was, was, was something that was very appealing to them. They talked about how unique they felt like their graduation would be if they could, if they could have the Bristol Motor Speedway event. Um, and we felt like, um, that would be, that would be great. So that was one of the options. We had an in-person graduation option that I think a lot of other folks have sort of referred to as the virtual graduation idea, where a student would cross the stage and, and we would present them, and they would do that sort of individually. We would set it different times for them to come in and, and, and cross the stage. We'd video that. And then we would splice that video together to make it look like a more traditional ceremony. Um, the third option that was generated had to do with simply waiting for a traditional ceremony. And then the fourth option was to, uh, a combination of, of options one and two. That included the Bristol Motor Speedway and the in-person or virtual option. I like to call it in-person option. So we put together those four ideas and, and began to construct a survey. And as we were constructing the survey and, and meeting with the principals and talking about it, it became abundantly clear, um, from the initial survey that was sent out to the high school seniors that they, they really wanted the Bristol thing. They really wanted to have a unique graduation. So we adjusted the four options to give the bonus of whichever option that they choose or that they chose, we would, we would do Bristol Motor Speedway, because it seemed abundantly clear that that's what the seniors wanted. So we said, okay, one way or the other, we're gonna do Bristol Motor Speedway. So that's what we're working toward. And then the option became basically between having an in-person graduation or having a graduation that was more traditional, that we would just have to wait, uh, wait to see when that could happen. So, so after kind of narrowing it down, um, to those two options, we've, we put together a survey. We also put together, uh, I feel like it was an elaborate video of explanation of the, of the two options, okay? And, and, and just to add clarity to what those two options ended up being, um, the first option being the in-person graduation experiences that is individually scheduled at their schools, allowing up to nine family members or guests to attend with them in May as they receive their diplomas. This would be an edited, uh, there'll be a video that will be made of each graduate cross crossing the stage. That video will be edited and produced to look more like the traditional cerem- ceremony. Uh, the video would also include a speech from, uh, the principal, from Dr. Cox, from the students that would normally do a, a, a speech at their graduation. That would be put in the video as well. And then option two was that we have, um, we have, we wait for the traditional ceremony, that we have, uh, that we have a ceremony that would, we, we would try to put those, those dates as, as a cutoff date. We'd have to have, uh, a date that would be, uh, in July the 30th or August the 1st would be our dates that we would, that we would be willing to extend out to have that traditional graduation ceremony. And we would have to make a decision. If we went with option two, we would have to have a decision, because it takes a lot. If you've never planned a graduation or a prom or these things, it's kind of hard to explain all that goes into it. We'd have to have a firm date that we're gonna have that event by July the 20th, so we could proceed with having the event on July the 31st or August the 1st. All right? So, so we, we set all that up in, in option two and we have, and we've already sent out the survey. We have more than half of the seniors have already taken the survey. We, and we're, and, and we're anxiously waiting to get to Friday. Friday at 3 o'clock is when we're closing down the survey. At that point, we feel like we have a really good picture of what the, the seniors would like to do. Uh, as I stated before, you know, a lot of work went into the survey and to the options that were presented, uh, to get student input and to make sure that the seniors had a lot to say about that. Um, we really felt like that it was important that we tried to get the graduation in this summer. Uh, and the reason why is simply because we know that the longer that, uh, we go without having a traditional ceremony in option two, if we don't, the longer we wait, the less students that we're going to have, they're gonna be able, be able to participate in that graduation. We want everybody to be able to be a part of that graduation, uh, ceremony. And, uh, if, after we get past the summer, just really feel like our numbers drop off significantly and it really hinders, um, our students' ability to attend their ceremonies we wait past the summer. So that's, that's why we had a target date of July the 31st or August 1st. If we could have it sooner and the COVID-19 thing really cleared up for us and we were able to have it, that would be wonderful. You know, but, um, but, uh, we did have to find a place to stop that. Those are, those are the main things I wanted to share with you about the graduation ceremony. Uh, I don't know if you have any questions or comments about the ceremony of Dr. Cox. If you feel like there was something else you'd like for me to share about the, uh, about the events and about our work, I'd be happy to.
Um, sure. I, 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 again, appreciate, uh, all the work that, uh, you've, you've put into this along with the principals. Um, I would just say also that, um, you know, I think all of us, uh, would like to have a, a traditional in-person, on-time graduation. Um, that, that's what we all would like to do, but given our circumstances, we're, we're just not able to do that in May, as we said. Uh, and one of the things that I think, um, I'll just speak personally, is, is, um, especially concerning is we have a number of our seniors, uh, who will enter military service and will do so, uh, in the first part of June. So I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned, um, that any option that we're able to do, uh, may not be able to include them. So I just wanted to say that. So I look forward to, um, having the results from the survey. I, again, want to say a big thank you, uh, to our students who, who generated these initial options and for all the thought and care, uh, that's, that's gone into this. And, um, uh, you know, it, it, um, I, I feel, I feel good about the work, uh, that has been done. And I think, uh, you know, we were true to, um, our, our commitment to heavily involve our students in this, because it is their graduation. So, um, I will, at that, I will just see if there are any questions, anyone has.
The Bristol Motor Speedway will be...
Is your mic on?
I'm not sure I heard the question really well, Mr. Jones. I believe you asked if we're gonna have Bristol Motor Speedway one way or the other, despite which option is chosen. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. The, uh, will the, will the Bristol Speedway be part of the graduation ceremony regardless of whether option one or option two is chosen by the students?
Yeah, yes, sir, it will be. We felt like that was something that was, uh, very special to the students, that we had that opportunity for them. And so, uh, no matter which option they choose, we are going to do Bristol Motor Speedway. We are, uh, we've proposed several dates to them, which we would, you know, like to host that ceremony there. And we were just waiting to get, for them to get back with us to confirm that.
Yes, and just to clarify on that, uh, each school will have their individual time. Uh, so, uh, each of the four high schools ha- will have their own special time for that, and it will be optional. So, uh, only the students who wish to participate in it, uh, will do so. So we, we don't require that.
Correct. Thank you. Yes, sir. And I, I would, I would like to give another shout out to our high school seniors who participated, um, in helping us to put this together. They were wonderful. They were, they were just highly intelligent students that were, that were involved in this process. They gave a lot of very thoughtful comments. And, um, they were just great. And I just really appreciate if any of those guys or their parents are listening in today on the work session, um, I just really appreciate all of their help. They were great.
Okay. Yeah, I have a question on that. I know we're Bristol Motor Speedway. You're saying that the survey showed that. If we get to do the in-person, are we still gonna open our schools back up to these seniors to take one last trip down that hall to do their final goodbyes?
Well, we, we don't plan on really, all the teachers that will, um, we're gonna have to ask staff to help us out, I guess, to direct the traffic and to get everyone through. Um, I, I don't think that we're probably going to, and, and I'm, I'm speaking off the top of my head. This is not something we've gotten to, uh, yet as far as all the details. The teachers will be there, a, a majority of them, uh, to help with the process. Um, we've not really talked about whether the students will, uh, what else they would need to do when they come in on that day. So I guess, I don't really know, Mr. Robinson.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, I think that will depend on, uh, the, the phase that we're in, uh, at, at, depending on whatever choice we make. And I, I'm glad you asked that, because, uh, I wanted to explain that. And, and I, I learned a great deal, uh, in, uh, talking with Dr. May and then Gary Mace, who is the director of our health department, here about the phases. So just briefly, if you'll indulge me, we're, we're currently, Tennessee, or Sullivan County is in phase one of recovery. And so while we're in phase one of recovery, uh, we still have the social distancing requirement of, uh, uh, at least six feet apart. Um, there can be, uh, groups no greater than 10, uh, during that time. For us to move out of phase one into phase two, there has to be a minimum of two consecutive weeks where the, uh, the data, uh, is good, meaning decline in infections. And I don't want to, uh, speak in terms that, that are beyond me, but you have to have at least two good weeks, uh, of data before you can move into phase two. Phase two, then, if, once you get into there, which could be, and I'm told, you know, a minimum of a month from moving from phase to phase. Um, once you're in phase two, uh, that is, uh, groups of no more than 50, still socially distanced, still, uh, wearing the PPE masks. Um, and then the same thing, you have to have the probably four more weeks, uh, before you, uh, a minimum before you could move into phase three. Phase three then, uh, is groups of no larger than 100, still six feet apart, still wearing PPE. So it's only, uh, once, uh, you're out of all three phases that you are allowed to have a mass gathering of more than 100. So that was one of the things that, uh, Dr. May was able to clarify for us. Okay. Go ahead.
I guess the comment that I would like to make was, uh, just from parents and phone calls I've had today and emails we've had about it. It seems to the parents that I've talked to, especially with the video and everything that they went through, that we're kind of forcing option one, because option two has got so many caveats on it that it'd be impossible for us to get to that. Even if, just, um, as Dr. Cox just said, if, if phase one started May 1st and it's gonna be 28 days and 28 days and 28 days, that already puts us to the very end, if not August 1st. And they're concerned that we're pushing that, you know, statewide thing. So if we're looking at it on a local level and Dr. May is gonna be the one that makes that decision, I think they'll be a lot better with it. But if we're gonna say that we're gonna look at statewide guidance and everybody is gonna have to be, that, from, from the way that they took it, it's saying that everyone has to be okay with it. We're gonna be opening it up nation, or statewide before it's really gonna be there. And the math just doesn't add up to them. So I guess what they're wanting us to do, and I, I can understand what they're saying and I actually agree with them, is that everything that came out from the get-go on this was joint guidance. Kingsport, Bristol and Sullivan County were stopping schools, were closing schools. Everything was joint guidance. Well, the city of Bristol came out and says that they're, July 24th, gonna have a graduation. Dominance Bennett came out and said they're gonna have a graduation on July 17th and 18th. So what they are asking me to do is ask for us to do the exact same thing. Have the joint guidance. Do just what Bristol and Kingsport did and say, this is the date, we're gonna do it. And unless somebody makes us not do it, let's just stick with that. So the people that were talking to me and the, the seniors that were talking to me, I thought it was, it was a very unique concept. They said, you realize we're 18 and we're voters, right? So, I mean, I, I love the fact that they're involved. I love the fact that they're taking their civic duty good with that. But I do agree with them, that we need to have the same joint guidance that city of Bristol and city of Kingsport came out with. Let's just pick a date. Let's have a graduation. And let's not make them think that we put so many caveats on that one thing, that we're not gonna be able to have that graduation. And if we can't, then they get nothing. And I think it just kind of scared some of them and some of their parents and stu- and students were all concerned.
Uh, I'd like to, to respond to that. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, you know, I think I was very impressed with the group of seniors that we met with. Um, I trust them. Uh, I, I think that they will, um, make their choices based on the best information that we can provide them. And the, the guidance that we're talking about that explained is, is not necessarily state guidance. As you know, Sullivan County has its own health department. And, you know, uh, as I was in a regional superintendent's meeting, uh, this week, and any school system that has picked a date, uh, has picked a date, and there, there is an understanding that that's an aspirate date. And everybody understands that if the conditions are not as, as I just explained, uh, they will not be allowed to hold a traditional in-person, uh, ceremony. So that, that is not different for us. The difference here is, is that some systems have, have picked a date with the aspiration of doing that. So, um, at the beginning, we did have a lot of, uh, conversations, uh, jointly, uh, all the districts in Sullivan County. But graduations, um, are, uh, something that is a little more individual. And, uh, here in Sullivan County, we have four high schools. And so in the cities of Bristol, Kingsport, Johnson City and Lisbeth, and then many of them around us have, they're one high school district. So it's a little bit different, uh, in doing so. I, I, again, I would just say I have complete confidence, um, in, in our seniors. Uh, we wanted to make them, uh, aware of all the factors and be completely honest, so that they had the best in, information. I, I will assure you that there's no intent on anyone's part to, uh, try to do anything but to give, uh, the best and most complete information. Uh, and frankly, to be very honest with our kids about what has to happen before we can have an in-person graduation.
Uh, the only thing I'd like to, to add to that is that, um, I agree. I mean, our seniors are great. Uh, they're putting a lot of effort in this, a lot of work into this. The part that was confusing to some people and, and makes concerns is that we were talking about state guidance and CDC guidance. We have our own health department. We're one of the only counties in the state. I think there's only six counties in the state that do have their own health department and have like a Dr. May there that can make those things. I wish we would make it local guidance. Even though it's, it's understood that Dr. May is gonna be the one to make that decision, uh, we should make it clear that it's gonna be our Sullivan County person that says if we can or if we cannot have it. I know he will use CDC guidance and he will use state guidance, but we need to make sure that they understand, because we put too many caveats in there if we don't just say we will make a local decision.
Well, again, I, what I would say is, you know, in, in talking, and we have many, many conversations frequently with, with the health professionals, uh, I think at the top is the CDC. And I don't think that, uh, you're gonna find any state organizations probably, um, and local that are gonna be too far off of compliance with each other. So if that, if that part is confusing, I, I do apologize. But, uh, you know, the, the local health department is, is going to not be too far off the track from, uh, the state health officials and, and the CDC. So, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of, of guidance that kind of fits inside of each other. So there's, the, the differences between the CDC and the state and, and local are not gonna be fairly significant.
I think it's also worth noting the fact that, you know, these, we have provided actually more time, Mr. Irison, to get in a graduation ceremony than the other ones have proposed dates for, if that makes sense. You know, so, so if they, and I, that's been, that's been voiced by each of our principals, uh, even, even away from our seniors. We want to have a graduation. We really want to make sure that we have an opportunity to honor our seniors. That's very important to us, especially as a former high school principal. That's, that's one of the pinnacle points in the entire year. The last thing we want is to miss that. I assure you, I assure you that there, there's not a, a separate agenda in all this, that our goal is to have a graduation of some kind for our seniors. We want that to happen. And I, I really hope no one, you know, doesn't understand that.
Well, if I could say, uh, I had today, um, uh, someone asked me, why could we not just go outside and have an event, schedule it and make sure everybody sits six feet apart? And the, the reason that you can't do that, I'm glad the person asked the question. The reason you can't do that is because you, you can't have an event at this point in phase one with more than 10, regardless of how far you're sitting apart. Uh, and when you're in phase two, uh, that number goes to 50. And when you're in Phase Two, that number goes to 50, and in Phase Three, it goes to 100. So you have to be, in order to have any event with, with more than 100 people, you have to be completely out of the three phases. So that was a good question, and I know it's very confusing, you know, to, to try to understand all of that.
Oh, and let me just say one other thing, actually. The lead team we have is fantastic. The principals we have are all very, very good people, very smart individuals. And I really do think that if we say, this is what the guidelines are, and they are going to find some amazing things that we haven't even thought of. They're going to find ways around things, and they're going, not around things, I worded that incorrectly, but they're going to find ways to make things happen. So I really hope that we don't, and I don't think it's intentional by any stretch of imagination. I know we want to honor our seniors. I think everybody wants to honor our seniors. But I want to make sure that we don't lead them into a, a bad vote because they think that something's going to happen, and now we're looking at national and Tennessee guidance, and we're just not going to have our graduation. So I'd rather have the virtual one than nothing. I think the virtual one is an absolute last thing that anybody would want. They would like to have that experience of walking across a stage and having people cheer for them. It's just an amazing experience, and it really breaks my heart that there's even a chance that they might miss it. And I want to make sure that they realize, when they're doing the voting, please vote for an in-person thing, and we will try our best to make it happen. And I don't want them to think that we're going to somehow do something because of state or federal guidance, that the Sullivan County Department of Health is the one that should be making that decision. That's, that's all I was saying. And that's just from the phone calls I had today. This is not my personal opinion. This is several conversations. I've had a lot of conversations today.
Thank you, Mr. Irisen. I appreciate you.
Any, any further discussion or questions about graduation survey?
I just want to make sure I understand. Is there any reason to think that the local authorities are going to say something different?
No, but they, they have the ability to take the guidance, and they're the only ones that make the call. Everybody else can say, this is what we're wanting to do, but, I mean, I don't, I don't think so either. But if we're having to wait for the entire state to say something that's a little different than our local Health Department, because we may have no cases about that. But there may be cases in Nashville or Memphis that causes a problem. So that was a concern, is that why are we worried about the whole state when we're worried about our local thing that could make the call?
But isn't the other districts by putting dates out there kind of misleading? Because the odds are, they're not going to get to do that. I mean, that's kind of the way I, am I wrong? Is it, is it, is those dates that they put out there, is that kind of reach?
It's only a week or two earlier than us.
Yeah, but I'm talking about with the phase, with the phases that we got to get out of, having to get out of Phase Three. Isn't that very, those dates very optimistic?
I mean, at, at one point, I heard them say that it could take 14 days, I think, was one of the guidance to go from each phase. And I mean, the likelihood of it happening, I'm not sure. But I know that that was the minimum, was 14, but it's-
That's right. The, the minimum is 14 days. And, you know, I was, again, on another call, we were talking about another matter, but another healthcare professional in, in the state capacity was saying, you know, once you reopen things, it could be longer than four weeks. So until you know what the total results are. But again, you know, I trust our seniors. I think, I mean, I was so impressed with them, the ones that, that we talked with. And I, and I just have a belief that if you give good people good information, they make good decisions. And that's our intent. And, you know, I, I would encourage all of our seniors to complete the survey if they haven't. We are not lobbying, and I, I would discourage anybody from lobbying them to vote any other way than they conclude on their own with the, with the, with the facts. And, you know, if anybody has any question about those, we will try to answer the facts. But, you know, that, I think our first obligation is to our seniors and to be truthful with them about what we know. And so anyone that would suggest that we're trying to scare them, that's just not true, not correct. It is about giving them the best information that we have. And I'd rather, I would rather be upfront about that at this point than to, to mislead them the other way.
I, I guess I have one more question, and I'll say, I'm not, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to have a in-person graduation by the end of July. I would say to you that if we're not capable of having an in-person graduation by the end of July, we're going to be facing bigger decisions than that concerning other issues. So I believe in what the seniors, doing what the seniors want to do. The two choices that we have are very positive choices, and I think it's up to them to make that decision, between them and their parents, which one they want to make, and then that we would abide by the decisions that they make, assuming that we do meet the qualifications for having an in-person graduation. And again, if we don't, we've got other major decisions that we would have to face concerning the different phases.
Can I just say one more thing, and I'll quit? Explain the process of what happens after this, because I guess Friday is the end of the vote. So what happens next? And thank you very much.
So, you know, we will get the results of the survey. I have no idea what the, the, the final tally would be, but if the results are conclusive one way or another, then our recommendation and procedure would be to, to follow that direction. You know, if it winds up being a 50-50 toss-up, then we have another matter to consider. But, you know, we would begin our plans based on the predominant choice that our seniors make, and-
I guess, I mean, is it coming back up here, or is it going to be made?
So the survey, the survey is, is, you know, one, one of the things that we, we put a lot of thought and care into all of this. And in designing the survey, we wanted to make sure that we were hearing directly from our seniors. And so the video was sent to them, and we have assurances that we get one response per graduating senior. And so we, we know that what we get back is, is going to be good information. And so it, it's, it's a Google survey. It's linked to the Sullivan County email addresses that are issued to our students. So the, the tabulation is an automatic thing, and Mrs. Nave and Dr. Palmer were instrumental in the design of that. And so I would just ask either one of them to comment further.
I mean, I guess, is it your decision? I don't care. I just want to make sure, if I am to ask a question.
Graduation is a decision for Drake.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure if I was asking a question.
Yeah.
They set the dates originally for the graduations.
Right. That's all I was looking for.
So Dr. Palmer, did you have anything to add about the survey design?
No, not really. I, I think the survey design is, is, is excellent. I think it's based completely on what the, the seniors really, what we co-listed around. I don't think that, I think we'll get a great result from the survey. I think it'll be clear, and I think we'll know what to do as of Friday.
Okay, then, continuing on with the, with the agenda, Mr. Hughes, did you have any comments to make?
Well, you know, we had talked about setting a date for next month, but I think what we're going to do is, in this case, we're going to leave it open. We have so many things up in the air, and Dr. Cox has a possible closing on his house. He's going to see how that date rolls, how that works, and we'll, we'll come back to you with some possibilities. So his, his closing date falls exactly on what could be our meeting date unless something changes, so.
Well, congratulations on closing.
So let's, let's put that, we'll send that to you with plenty of time.
Sounds good.
And if you have suggestions, of course, you're welcome to send them. That's all I have, Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hall, comments on the sale of the Bluff City Middle School property?
I think you have the information on that. The bids were received by Chris Davis' office and opened, and there were two bidders. The high, highest bid was by Christopher Lejour of Business Information Systems, and that bid was $170,000 for the portion of the property that is deeded in the name of the Board of Education, and $20,000 for the rest that is in the name of the county. So the county would have to approve their part, and the bid is, is contingent upon being able to purchase the whole parcel, both, both parts. So I'm, I will be recommending that you, that we accept that and pass it along to the County Commission for them to do as well. As you know, we heard from Mr. Lejour and his, I hope I'm saying his name right. Lejour. I'm trying to make it more French, I guess. But at any rate, he did talk to us about his intentions, and I think everyone was impressed by that. So that would be my recommendation, and we would need to vote to approve that.
Mr. Hall, I wanted to make a few comments and clarifications. Did, did we leave off the front right lot that was restricted?
Yes.
And I thought we did, but it, I think it's our intention to-
Your microphone.
It's, it's not showing you.
And I can unmute you if you're speaking.
Hmm?
Yeah, his, his is up there.
Maybe I need to speak up. I wanted to, you know, point out that our intention was to sell that altogether. We didn't do it that way because we didn't want to complicate the process and have some hangup. It's, I, I hope it's our intention to, when we get that restriction lifted, to transfer that piece of property to him. It's just a very small-
Is that the used-for-school purposes restriction?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, right on the front corner there. We didn't include that because we didn't want to complicate the process and have any entanglements. But the intent, I think of the board, certainly my intent, was when we do get that lifted, is to make that transfer.
A dollar or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to make, I just want to make that, put that on the record. And if anybody has any different understanding or opinion, now, now would be the time.
And let me say, I, I don't want to, to go on record as saying, we'll get that restrict, restriction lifted, that that's a sure thing. I would certainly be glad to work toward that, but it would probably require the cooperation of other people, and it's a, a little corner that's half an acre. So, you know, that, I guess, we'd have to think about how much it was worth to, to invest in that. But I just didn't want to give the impression that that's a sure thing that we could do. I'm on board, and I'd do anything I could to make that happen.
Let me just ask one question. This is the legal part that I'm not sure of. If that issue is a restriction that's on the deed, could we not still do a quit claim? I mean, so, and then leave it up to him kind of how to go about that? Because I, I just, I was just thinking if it's, I don't want us to spend a lot of money on it. If we could just do a quit claim and let them take care of the issue, instead of it, at that point, it's no longer our issue? Or am I, I mean, I just want to-
And, and that's a good point, and that is something we've discussed in other contexts. And if we do a quit claim deed, that just means whatever we have, we're passing along to someone else. As Mr. Hughes alluded to, and I think I'll expound on it a little bit, in the process here of, of having the, the bidding and putting this out in public notice, if we included that in there, it seems to me that could have held the whole thing up. You know, it, it could have been a major complication that didn't need to be. So yes, that is a possibility that we, we could do that.
So we could actually say, selling you this, and then quit claim the other, and it's up to you to figure it out? I mean, you know, just-
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree. Well, no, I understand what you're saying, and that's pretty much exactly what I said about the other property, and a good summarization of it. We would have to vote for it and vote on it. I don't think we could do it without another vote and maybe some other considerations. But it's, it's something definitely worth looking into. And obviously, we would like him to have the whole, it's a, it's a city block, so we would like him to have the whole thing. I echo all those sentiments.
Thanks.
The sale of the other school properties update, do you have any comments to make on those, Mr. Hall?
We have completed all the paperwork for the sale of what I call the Holston Ball Field property. That is the, where the, the baseball field, the Ruertan used that up until not too long ago. There are no restrictions on that, and that should come out probably in the newspaper this coming Sunday. I believe the date on that is May 28th, if I'm remembering correctly. And then we'll follow that up with Holston Valley. And again, I've done the paperwork on that. We're obviously having to work closely in conjunction with Ms. Davis' office, and so to some extent, they're, they're working from home, and I'm working from home. So that's probably caused that process to move a little slowly, but it's in line, and it will come out in due process there after, after the Ball Field property. And then, then we'll probably need to talk some more about the, the old school property. But, but we're moving right along and making progress on it, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be getting some sales and generating some revenue.
Has anyone reached out for the Holston Valley property yet?
Not directly to me, but I, I understand there are people making inquiries. They don't always make them to me.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jump down to new business, and we do have a recommendation this evening in, in the business meeting for the board to approve the purchase of Transfinder. So, Mr. Miller, could you just briefly tell us about Transfinder, what it is, why it's something that we need?
I've asked Karen to present for me. Transfinder is a transportation program, and it has several different modules in it. And one of the biggest things that it does is it will help us create routes based on students' stops. And the stop is actually where they get on and off the bus each day. And then the process is very fluid, so we can, we can move those buses around as needed if one is taking a long time to run a particular route. We can move stops from that bus onto other buses. Right now, everything is done basically by hand in conjunction with our contractors, where this would let us do everything in-house ourselves. It would also, if we go with a GPS version, it would put GPS on the buses, so we would know when buses start in the morning, when they finish, what time the first student's picked up, what time they're dropped off at school. We could track the bus and see that if the planned route is the actual route that's being taken. Because quite often, we find buses going on roads that we've told them not to be on or in areas they should not be on or be within. So it, it really gives us a lot of help with just basically overseeing the operations of the buses. The bus owners, it will help them because if they see buses in places they shouldn't be, that's mileage on their buses, so that's going to be- So that's going to be tires, oil, fuel, so it will help them save money as well. And what I would like to do is do some negotiations with them as bus contracts are due each year and help offset some of the costs for GPS back on to the owners, because they should see some savings with that. We have two different proposals for you, but the one that I would really like for you to consider is the second one. I know the first one was the one sent out in your board packet and it did not include GPS and it was for the sum of 50,000. We were kind of in a unique situation. Dr. Cox and Ingrid pointed this out as we were going through the budget. And with the savings on transportation this year that we still have, this is a good time to go ahead and purchase a program like this because there is an initial upfront cost and then you have a yearly fee after that. I asked them for a three-year contract because I knew we wouldn't want to invest this much money in something just one year. We'd want it at least go for three years. And there's some savings when you do a multi-year contract. So with that being said, the money that we saved in transportation, it would be nice to go ahead and buy the package with the GPS so that we have it, knowing that we may or may not use the GPS this coming year. This coming year will be all about bus routes for the new high school. And with that new high school, basically comes new routes for all other schools. Because once we make the move and consolidate our middle schools in those areas, the whole busing situation changes. And depending if we do it all at once or we do it in phases, it will mean redoing several routes over if we do it in phases. So this will help us save a lot of time in that regards. But the cost with GPS the first year is 47,890 and that's due upon execution of this agreement. And part of that agreement, $18,000 of it, is them working with us to take what we have right now in our database, the student stops, and transform those into routes. And from those routes, then we can change those as we need to. And that also includes the training for myself and my assistant. We can get some training for principals because eventually I'd like to turn part of this over so principals can monitor where buses are, not just me. So that way, as they get phone calls in the afternoon, they can, you know, tell parents where the buses are. There's also an app available that parents can put on a phone. They can see where the bus is and they can set up geo fences so that when it passes a certain point, they know it's close to them. One other feature that's in that part is a communication system so that we can send messages not only about buses but for anything else. So it may be a replacement for School Messenger, once we get into it and see just what it does offer and how easy it is to use. So that may be some savings there if this would replace School Messenger for us.
You just made sure my Schula School Messenger.
You don't know how I dislike School Messenger.
And one thing I asked about this was, I asked them, I said, who hosts the software and the data? And they will host it so that we don't have to. Because what worries me is if we host that information, all it takes is one file up and something to get out that's confidential and then we're on the hook for it. Whereas this way here, it's on them.
There's another really big thing about it, too. It also avoids FOIA.
Yes.
It avoids FOIA requests. Because if it's not hosted here, they can avoid that.
And it really only works out to be about $3,000 a year for them to host. So I thought that was well worth it.
I can just say a couple of things. You know, in my former district, we used a software package like Transfinder and it does help you realize additional efficiencies. I think having a GPS component would be particularly helpful in communicating to our parents. I wish we could say that we never would have a late bus again or we wouldn't have a bus breakdown. But, you know, parents want to know in their schedules where the bus is and how long it's going to be until my kid gets to their destination. So I think we can do a better job of that. So we are recommending this and Mr. Lozier can speak a little bit more about, you know, using the savings to make the purchase. But that's our recommendation to you this evening. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have about this recommendation.
47,000 would be upfront immediately if we purchase the current year's budget?
Yes.
And then next year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Can I say something? Again, just sort of to clarify, I'm not altogether certain that that information wouldn't be subject to public information requests just because it's on somebody else's computer. Now, I'm sort of trying to think what anybody would request, you know, where was such and such a bus at such and such time? I don't know, but I guess that's a big part of what we're doing here. But I've been into a case like that way more than anybody wants to know about, so that just sort of caught my attention.
Okay. I know those couple of things we do at work are that way, so.
Well, and, you know, there's a lot of ins and outs on that.
That kind of leads me to my question. Will this have the capability for, if we wanted to, that say we had a bus wreck, can we see what the speed was?
With the GPS, the software will allow us to monitor a lot of different things on that bus.
It actually is going to be a couple of the things, I mean, because I'm sure that you get complaints about buses running stop signs, buses going too fast. So we'll be able to prove or deny those with the GPS. Now, before, three years ago, when we were talking about the high school, I was here and at that time, the person doing the buses said that there was a program we already have. Do we not have a program?
We have a program called Versatrans.
Right.
And the problem with Versatrans is the mapping system. The maps that we have, Lindsey Lady has drawn those by hand. We did not have any GIS maps at the time to use to load into that system. And Versatran, it works really good from what I've seen. If you're a city, very heavily populated, stops very close together. But when you get into a rural setting like we have, it has a difficult time with roads.
Okay. So, yeah, okay. So I mean, it's, we have it, but this is definitely better and the GPS is a huge concept. I guess the other question I have on it is, it makes sense that we have money in our transportation because of the busing situation and the path that we ended up doing. Would they be an advantage while there is money here to pay the three-year to get a discount if you actually do a three-year upfront kind of thing instead of a, if there's enough money to do that, instead of just like a three-year payment to see if we could save a little bit on that? So just a thought.
That would be an Ingrid question.
I don't know if there's an availability for that or not. I think the pricing advantage was to get three years pricing, but I don't think that if you paid it all upfront, I don't know that you would get an additional advantage. It's something we can look into, though.
Anyone else have a question? I've got one and you probably don't know the answer. How hard would it be for this system to be enabled or disabled on a given day? I work with a company that has these systems and we routinely have people that take it upon themselves to disengage it on a certain day or at a certain time. But the systems are getting better, I understand.
I think with them hosting the software, I think that gives us that extra security so that nothing locally should happen with the data.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. And again, during the business meeting, we will respectfully ask the board to approve the purchase of Transfinder with the GPS option. Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Miller. So at this point, we come to, I guess, the feature of this evening, which is the presentation of the 2020-2021 budget and then also including that is a five-year capital improvement plan. I want to say a very special and heartfelt thank you to Ingrid Deloche, who is our business manager, who has worked very hard to put all this together. Also, members of the lead team and our principals, we were kind of thinking about this earlier today and this work really began in earnest in the month of January. So this has been a very long process. It's been made very difficult because of the constraints that we all are working under with COVID-19. And most all of the work that we've done as lead team on this has been done remotely via Google Hangout like we're having this evening. So that's just added extra layers of complexity and because of COVID-19 and I guess where we are in process with state revenues, local revenues, that's made it even more difficult. So I was counting up today, this is my 22nd school budget as a superintendent, and I don't recall one being as unique or as difficult as this one in this way. So I say that to say a special thank you to everyone who has contributed to this. It's been very thoughtful, heart-wrenching and lots of other words that we could put to it. But especially thank you to Ms. Deloche, who will now share the recommendations for the 2020-2021 general purpose budget and the five-year capital improvement plan. Ms. Deloche?
Well, I'd like to echo what Dr. Cox just said. Our lead team has been wonderful and they have spent months, not hours or days or weeks. They have spent months to get this ready and I just got to wrap it all up and put a bow on it. So they have done a great job and I greatly appreciate the team that we have and I respect them. I would put my life in their hands if I had to choose that. So thanks to them and thanks for you all for letting us do this virtually. I've never presented a budget virtually and it's very complicated compared to how we normally present it and it was already complicated to begin with, but we'll get through it hopefully and we will have the same effect as we would if we were there in person. I sent you an email out earlier today and it had a copy of this slideshow as well as a copy of all the budgets for all the different funds and we're just going to go through those. Feel free to stop me if you have questions. We'll ask for questions at the end as well and hopefully we can not labor too long on this, but actually get through it and have a good understanding of it. So the first budget I wanted to go over was the general purpose school fund budget. And you should have a document that has that all listed out. It's Fund 141. So if you want to look at that document while we go through this, you can do that as well. And again, if you need a paper copy of that, if you'll just let me know, we'll have one printed for you and get that to you somehow. But the easiest thing today was to do that electronically. To recap, the current year that we are in right now, you can see the revenues that were budgeted were a little over 80 million and the expenditures that were budgeted were a little over 83 million. So we had to take 2.9 million out of our reserves to cover the shortfall there between revenues and expenditures. That's what was budgeted in the 1920 year. And again, that's a conservative budget when we underestimate our revenues and overestimate our expenditures. We always want to do that to make sure that worst-case scenario, we are covered. If that worst-case scenario doesn't happen, that's good, but if it should happen, we are covered and we have a budget that will work accordingly. Jumping into 2020-21, local revenues are budgeted just like they have been for the past three years at a 2% loss in a city-county split. Like Dr. Cox was talking earlier, to determine local revenues for this year would be almost impossible. If you can find someone who knows exactly what we're going to get for 1920, I would love to talk to them. If you can find someone who can predict what we're going to get for 2021, I would pay for them to come to my house and let's talk because it's almost impossible. Larry Bailey and I talked this afternoon. He can't find anybody and I can't either that knows what to expect. So we're all in new territory and we're just trying to do the best we can to do that. But local revenues have been budgeted at the traditional 2% loss in the city-county split. In addition to that, local option sales tax has been decreased by 5% just because of the impact of COVID-19. With people staying at home, with major events being canceled, our local option sales tax will take a hit. It's just that, I guess, to say as to how much we're going to lose into that. Nobody will give a firm estimate as to what you're supposed to estimate with, but that's just my guess and that's all it is, is a guess. It's not even an educated guess, it's just a guess. So that's in there for local option sales tax. We have received one BEP estimate and that estimate actually decreased in funding from last year. We lost $106,000 in BEP funding even though the governor put in additional money for professional salaries. Also included in that BEP estimate is a required instructional salary budget increase of $365,000. Since our salary does not meet the state minimum, we have to increase our instructional salaries by that. So that was included in the BEP estimate. So not only do we lose money, we have to increase our budget by 365,000. Going to expenditures for 2021, we have given both professional and support staff step increases. As you know, they're on salary scales and they bump. Each year, they can bump up to a different step. That usually equates to about 1% of their salary on average. So there is a step increase included for all of our employees. There's also a 1% raise included in this budget that you have before you. The governor recommended a 2% salary increase, so with our step increases and our 1% raise, that's how we came to the 2%. There's also a 5% insurance increase that will be implemented at January 1st. Our insurance year goes from January 1st to December 31st. So that will actually be half of a year that we will recognize that expenditure this year. So that is included in that budget. Retirement rates, we gained and lost in that, so it kind of nets to zero, but I wanted you to know that, you may hear that when the county does their budget, they'll tell you that retirement went up. And retirement did go up for support staff. However, for professional staff, it went down. So those kind of net to zero, so there's really not an expense there, but I wanted you to know what was going on on that. For staffing changes in the general purpose fund, we had to add seven and a half teaching positions. We tried to fix a related arts issue that had come up and we also met comparability. This is something that you just kind of have to chase after the fact, but this year, we've done a whole lot of work. The lead team worked, I'd say, weeks to make sure that we're going to meet comparability. And that's just something with Title I, you have to make sure that you're not supplanting a Title I school with that. So we'll meet comparability with that. We also added a technology position. As you know, technology never has a surplus of employees. However, with all that has happened in this year, if we ever needed technology employees, we need them now because with everything going virtually, it's just unbelievable what we're having to do with that. And there's also been a public information officer that was added. So those are the positions that were added to our general purpose school budget. So wrap all that up and let's see where we're at. We've got revenues budgeted of 79.5 million and we have expenditures budgeted of 84.8 million. So the budget that you have before you proposes to take 4.7 out of undesignated fund balance and 650 out of reserves. And let me explain why we think 4.7 can come out of fund balance. With COVID-19, there's been pros and there's been cons. We were allowed to save some money, just like we were talking with bus contracts. That saved us some money. Electric bills, we've saved some money there. We didn't lose as much as we thought we would lose. We didn't lose as much as we thought we would lose or predicted or budgeted to lose in the city-county split. So all that wrapped up, we think we're going to roll, think is a good term, it's not definite. But trying to project our revenues, we think we will roll about $2 million into fund balance at the end of the year. Now, do I think that will come every year? No, but I think that's one advantage of COVID-19. So with that thought, our projected ending balance in undesignated fund balance, I think at the end of the year, will be about $12 million. I feel comfortable that we could take 4.7 out of that simply because we are recognizing some savings this year. So that would leave our ending balance at 7.7. The question always comes up, well, will we meet our 3% required balance? And you can see there at the bottom, yes, we will. So even if we don't roll our 2 million in, we'll still have enough there to meet that required balance. And that's all I have for general purpose school fund. Is there anything that, any questions or need further clarity on?
Ms. Deloach, I would just like to add a couple of additional pieces of information. You had mentioned in the additional staffing request, the related arts. One of the things that we discovered this year is, especially in our elementary schools, that students were not experiencing the same related arts program in each of our schools. So this will give students the same experience regardless of the elementary school that they attend. And then it also helped us with the comparability. So that's inside of that. And then you had mentioned that the 1%, I call COLA, Cost of Living Allowance or the raise, and the step, that is the 2%. The cost of a 1% addition, either with step or Cost of Living Allowance or raise, is about $450,000. And then, of course, we've discussed before the addition of a public information officer. Given all of the things that are going on, giving a higher level of service to our public with public information is something that I do believe is a priority. And I just wanted to add those comments to support this budget ask.
I think another thing I forgot to mention was we have increased the pay of substitute teachers. That has been a concern that was obviously brought to the board. We will increase that pay by $10 per day for both certified and non-certified substitutes. And that is included in that budget.
Mr. Smith, what is the current substitute teacher pay? Is a question.
I think I can answer that for Mr. Smith. It's $55 for non-certified and 60 for certified.
So the recommendation is to add $10 to that as an initial step in trying to get us closer to market?
Correct.
Just one question, I'm not positive, I heard what you're saying, I mean, I was trying to follow along. But what is the projected that we'll be putting into undesignated fund balance from this year?
And I'll qualify this again. It, projected is very hard right now, but of all my predictions, I think it will be about $2 million that we will roll into fund balance.
Sorry, Dr. Cox, I lost power there for a second. I had to go hook it back up. You were asking me a question.
Yeah, the question, Mr. Smith, was the current rate of substitute teacher. But Mrs. Deloach has answered that for us, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Is our budget increasing about 1.6 million this year in the proposed budget?
Yes.
Thanks.
Were we able to address any of the maintenance department pay as far as the starting pay in the low end? I mean, some of our maintenance departments make less than $10 an hour and that's really not good.
We have employees all across our district that make less than $10 an hour. And I would suggest if we address any department, we address them all.
I'm 100% for that, we need to do that.
Food service as well. It's not just the general purpose school fund. We have lots of employees who are severely underpaid.
Any questions from board members? Comments?
The one question I had, I think you addressed it, I just want to make sure. Because that was one thing, again, I got another call today about this, the art teacher at Blue Elementary. That was what you were talking about, we're going to have those everywhere. Okay, fantastic, that was one of the big questions I had.
That was part of the positions that we added, so that should fix that problem.
Okay. And then the 2% that the governor recommended, they usually don't fund all of it, of course, they fund a portion of it. How much do they actually fund? Because I understand the 1% step increases, but the 1% pay increase making it to, some teachers, of course, never liked that. So that's why I'm going to try to find out, how much did they actually fund? What did we have to do?
We actually lost money in the BEP calculation, so they didn't fund anything.
But I think, Ms. Deloach, please correct me if I'm not saying this the right way. The 2% is only on the BEP funded positions, is that correct? And every district has more than the number?
Correct.
And what was the actual increase in insurance this year? I know that, I think, is this year that it didn't go up at all, or was that just last year?
It's the current year that we're in. And we have been told that they are anticipating a 5% average increase, January the 1st. And with COVID-19, I'm not exactly sure that they could tell you how much it's going to increase. But that's what they're telling us and that's what we've been instructed to budget. It's 5% as of January the 1st. So it's actually a 2.5% budget increase. And that equated out to about $200,000.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ingrid, is it fair to say that, I know the last two years, we've done a really good job of being good stewards, I think, of the reserve fund. But if we had not, if we had used it on other things, where would we be now? If you can answer that?
I am very, very thankful that we have been good stewards of our money. If we had not been good stewards and didn't have sufficient cash or reserves on hand, we would not be able to pay our employees. It would be a very desperate situation and I'm very grateful for where we're at.
Thank you.
Ingrid, is our monthly payroll in the neighborhood of $7 million per month, somewhere south of?
Probably pretty close to it, yes.
So even with the projected fund balance of $12 million, we're looking at basically two months of projected expenditures or salaries in our reserve at any given time, is that correct?
That's right.
But I stand corrected, the $7 million is total expenditures, it's monthly expenditures, I believe.
Well, most of our expenditures are payroll related.
Anyone else have a comment or question concerning the budget recommended?
The percentage of expenditures is payroll related, is that in the neighborhood of 80% to 85%?
Yes, I think it's right at 83%, actually.
83%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
And for the 10 months that we are in school, I would say it's probably even more than that.
Mr. Hughes asked to repeat that, 83% of the payroll, or 83% of the expenditures are related to personnel?
Right.
On your projections for next year, the only major changes that you had was a 5% loss in state sales tax, is that correct?
Yes.
Based on the guesses?
Yes, the 5% is the major guess. And then we budgeted the 2% loss in the city-county split.
Which is the same we've budgeted for the last three or four years on the city-county split, right?
That's right.
Thanks.
Yes.
Could we actually get a copy of the last couple of years as far as, I know we've got the budget and then the amended budget, but could we get the actual expenditures to, we know that at the end of the year, how much actually rolled out of each account into fund balance, not just a general or grand total?
I can give you the expenditures, but you will need the whole picture. You'll need the revenues and expenditures in order to get what would roll into fund balance. But I don't care one bit to give you that.
Thank you very much.
Any, anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to Ingrid and everybody on the lead team. I know how hard you all work all the time, but I know, I can't imagine how hard it was to do this year's budget. So thank you all.
Ingrid, is this the, is this the time to ask about the curriculum and textbook expenditures?
Sure.
Okay, the curriculum textbook expenditure, I don't have that in front of me. I just looked at it on another document that you'd sent, is $844,310. Is CKLA, is it not free? I think it was, I know the first two years, quote, it was free except for the print. Or does this include all textbooks and CKLA curriculum, elementary through 12?
I'm not sure where you're getting that number, because I don't think textbooks were at 800,000. I think they're at 650, let me pull up that. Hold on just a minute.
You saw that? It was an increase, an increase of $76,250.
Okay, you're talking about current year, not the 2021 budget, correct?
Oh no. Ingrid, we can't hear you. We're still showing.
Hang on, here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to turn it on mine. Are you referring back to the amendment for 1920? I've lost all sound, so I don't know if you all can hear me or not.
I think she might be talking about the budget amendment to the 1920 budget that's as part of the...
Let's see.
The amendment of $76,000.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the only 800 number.
And that does include all textbooks and some curriculum supervisor may want to stop me, but I think CKLA is free materials.
Ingrid?
Yes.
The first four years we used it, we used open source, which are free. And we had teachers using black and white copies. And so now that we have allocated this textbook adoption so that our children and teachers can actually have the materials in their hands, the curriculum that is being purchased is K-12.
Thank you, Robin.
Ingrid, or somebody, could you repeat what Robin said? It wasn't loud on our end.
I can repeat it, Mr. Hughes. I said the first four years, the curriculum that we used was free, it's open source. So we downloaded and printed it, but the teachers had black and white paper copies of everything. And, you know, we originally got student readers that were colored in their hands. But the teachers, I know you all agree, deserve to have the materials they need to teach readings. So the budget for the textbooks includes K through 12.
Thank you, I heard it that time.
Just out of curiosity, the open source being free, and I get it that the, I mean, it's the better version, it's the colored version, is an expensive thing. How does that compare to the actual textbooks that we've been buying? I mean, the part of it going up doesn't usually reflect it or it doesn't always reflect it. I'm just kind of curious, is it along the same lines or is it more expensive? Or how does it compare to other textbooks now that we're buying the, not the open source, but the actual purchase material?
Right, and I should have, that's a good question. I should have also added that the materials have also been improved. So the writing is stronger, they have more grammar practice. So they are, it's like a version 2.0 instead of version 1.0. So there are some differences that are even more polished. The second answer to, I mean, the answer to your question is, usually with a textbook adoption, it could be like if you're adopting math or reading, it could be, you know, some districts just go all in and spend a million and a half. We've been leveraging, you know, partnerships and with the state that they have contracts where, I think the total adoption is going to be like 1.1 to 1.2, but I don't have firm numbers because we haven't gotten contracts. The amount that we budget in the textbook line has never been enough, so we normally do have to do amendments. Because sometimes we, our textbooks just don't cost enough when it's like science or social studies. But you can ask your question if I didn't answer it, Mr. Irson.
And Mr. Irson, in the past, for example, our ELA books in middle school would be around $75 to $80, in that range. And all the ELA materials this year went up because the state put so much time and effort into getting better materials, more high quality. And the writers or the publishers all went up. For example, ours went up to about $130. So everything's gone up substantially, elementary all the way to high school.
But I guess, I think I'm getting the right answer, I'm just trying to make sure. Like, so if all the textbooks went up $130, but now we're buying the CKLA 2.0 advanced version, which is great, is it still in line with that same $130? Is it, is it equate out just because it's an online? Or is it, does it equate out, in my mind, if you're not getting a book, you'd think it would be cheaper? But that's just me, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
All of the children are getting printed materials, so every elementary child will have their own workbook and using their work there in the classroom.
I heard every child would have. Robin, for some reason, every time we start trying to ask a question, it's getting a lot of echoing in here. I don't see a thing, so if you could just say yes or no, maybe?
Mr. Irson, what was your question, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to make sure and get it right in my mind. Now, Mr. Miller was talking about the books have gone up from maybe 75... Now, um, Mr. Miller was talking about the books have gone up from maybe 75 to some of them are like 130. We're going to CKLA 2.0, which is fine. Is it still equating out to be about the same thing since every child might be getting a workbook, but they're not getting a full-size textbook? I'm just trying to figure out and make sure the cost is somewhere in the, in the general vicinity or somewhere in the same area.
The cost for elementary is larger, greater than middle school because the children have more workbooks, there's more material for younger ones because the children in middle school can, you know, use paper and print more. So, no, the cost isn't equal, but the cost of all textbook series for middle, for elementary have also, you know, increased over the last eight years. But the number that you are seeing is for six years of materials for kids. So, I don't know if that puts it also, you know, frames it a little bit better. It's, this is a six-year purchase.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it did, I mean, it put it somewhere in the same ballpark. I was just trying to just get it in my head, which was more because buying an online source, even though it's a 2.0, it seems like it would be cheaper. But, I mean, I understand, I'm just trying to make sure that we're doing good.
No, that's okay, the children are getting print materials in elementary, so it's not just an online source.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The other piece that makes the textbook budget so hard? It's really not that hard, hard, hard. It's the fact that we usually don't get that until a very early in the year. You have to order in order for those textbooks to be here. So, you're just kind of guessing for the next year. Um, and the curriculum supervisors have done great at that, to try to keep within the ballpark.
Okay, are there any other questions about the budget proposal?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Actually, it was one that Ingrid, I'm sure she was going to touch on, but we, at first, we were saying that we had saved money to that travel, into the, uh, transportation budget, and it was gonna be plenty that we could actually pay over into, but we didn't really get a number. So, is it, is it gonna be enough or is it gonna be, that's a partial payment? Just want to find out kind of where we're at on that.
Are you talking about Trans Finder?
Yes.
It'll be enough to fully pay the initial payment?
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Uh, about Ms. Deutch, did you have any, uh, comment on the budget amendments? I think they're, um, kind of housekeeping and, um, kind of close out, um, things that we need to do.
Sure, we can, um, switch over to budget amendments if you want to.
Well, I just, uh, wondered if, uh, anybody had any questions about them or, uh, anything in that regard.
I'll just say my brief comment there, basically cleanup amendments for the end of the year. Um, there's nothing major in there for the amendments. Um, the resolutions for the grants, that's just money that we need to get put in the budget to spend the grants. So, um, it's really common year-end stuff.
Okay, and, and then, uh, I guess going back to, uh, the, the budget proposal, we had, I had asked, uh, for a, uh, a five-year look at our capital improvement needs. Uh, and so you have that embedded. Uh, it might be good to switch back to that and just talk a little bit about, um, the, the first leg of that. If you, well, you didn't actually get finished, so go back and, and, uh, and finish the, the PowerPoint, I guess. But including, uh, information about the, uh, the capital improvement requests.
That's the last budget I have in this presentation, so if we can just breeze through a couple more, we'll be right there at it. Um, the next one I had was the school nutrition budget. And very simply, that's a self-funded budget that gets no tax dollars and we don't fund it through the general purpose budget. So, it's self-funded, it also includes step increases and 1% raise for those employees as well. So, um, I will tell you that the school nutrition department has been working non-stop since the COVID-19 situation and they have fed thousands of people. And, um, how Amber and her girls do everything that they get done, I have no earthly idea. But, um, they've done a great job and that has nothing to do with budget, but it tells you what kind of people we have in our system.
It, just curious about that, I mean, I've, I've been blessed to be there a couple times and they, you're right, they do an absolutely amazing job. And the, the fact that we're feeding kids all over this county is just, it's phenomenal. How are we doing on that budget? I mean, are we, are, do we sustain or are we to the point where we're, we're gonna make it all the way through the month of May with no problems? Or how did, how are we doing on that? Just, I'm just curious, I have no idea how much it's costing to feed all these kids. It's well worth it, but I just don't know where we're at.
Um, I will tell you that I'm very thankful that our school nutrition fund is better off than it was a few years ago. Um, we used to didn't have enough cash to make it through the summer and GPS fund would have to supplement their income with a check. We've not had to do that. Um, but I will tell you that it is not easy to operate without any revenues coming in. Um, she is getting reimbursement for those meals that she's serving, but, um, it's not normal practice for us. And we are continuing to pay our employees as you directed, and that's a good thing. But it could put strain on her budget, so we're watching that. Um, I don't have a figure for you right now, but I hope to after we get this budget presented, to sit down with Amber and we can look at that. Um, there's some funding that we might be able to utilize, CARES Act funding. Um, there's even some private organizations that are looking at that. So, that is something that's on our radar and we are looking at that. If it continues to grow, we could have some serious issues. But I think somebody will step in and take care of it.
All right, thank you very much. I knew that you were watching, I just kind of didn't know if we were getting to that stage where we need to watch it close, but it sounded like you guys got it well in hand, so thank you for all you're doing.
I will tell you that that's not a money-making adventure. Um, somehow that got started that we were making money, so go get all the meals you want and it won't matter if you need it or not. It's not a money-making adventure and we're just hoping to break even.
Yeah, that, that's why I was asking, because I, I could, kind of thought it at some point, even if some of it gets reimbursed, I mean, you're still spending it, you're still having to spend out of pocket now. So, I didn't know if we were to the stage where we're not able to do it. But now, the, will we continue like a summer feeding or will we actually stop May 21st? And what, what is the plan on that, I have no idea.
Uh, so we will, um, uh, finish with, with the school year program at the, at the last day, which is the 21st. We will have a summer feeding program that's actually a separate program. Um, it'll be like in years past, we will not be, uh, delivering meals by buses for the summer program. The same, in the same, in, yes, in previous years, the same as we have had for summer feeding.
So, kind of like we're doing now with certain four or five sites and people come by and pick up, is it gonna be that extensive as it is now? Just no bus delivery or? Kind of think it's gonna be a lot more moving up.
We don't have all of the guidance, um, at this point, but, uh, our best understanding is that the funding will be, uh, the same. Uh, you know, we will, of course, have to be in compliance with any social distancing requirements. Uh, it could be, um, similar to this, it just depends on, uh, the guidance that we have to do that. But we will be, we'll be feeding, um, our kids, um, in a similar fashion with whatever modifications that we have to, uh, apply.
Any more questions on school nutrition? All right, seeing none, we'll breeze on through to Discovery Academy. Um, Discovery Academy is our tuition-based pre-K program. Um, it is self-funded as it receives no tax dollars, but it, um, the revenues are from tuition that parents pay for their child to be in this program. Um, this budget, it represents if we have a maximum capacity in that program. We are not operating at maximum capacity, but the budget reflects if we did. So, if we were to have an influx of students, that budget would hold that. And Robin does a great job of making sure that we stay within what we have in revenue. But that gets no tax dollars or revenue from the general purpose school fund.
Are we looking at expanding that to different locations or are we kind of everywhere we need to be now?
We have a pre-K at, a, a great, grant-funded pre-K at, um, eight schools. And then we have the Discovery Academy at one school. The other schools have a Head Start program, but the dream, to your, to your question, is, the dream is to have a, a state-funded pre-K at every school because, um, it's just really high-quality, great, great work going on with certified teachers. Not that Head Start is not a great service, because it is also.
There's only one, uh, Discovery Academy, where is it located?
That Discovery Academy is at Rock Springs because the school wouldn't qualify to have one from the state-funded and the community kept asking for a program there. So, we actually have children who pay for services there who don't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but we have more than half of the children who do qualify for free or reduced lunch. So, we're able to serve children, um, who, who need those supports as well as children whose families can afford that tuition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to renovation fund. And this is where we talk about the five-year capital improvement plan. Um, the budget that you have for the renovation fund or Fund 148, that includes year one of a five-year capital improvement plan. And Mr. Hubbard has worked to develop a five-year plan. You should have a copy of that as well in that budget, but I'll show you that on the screen. This is the first year of the five-year plan. Um, and then he's got the next four years going down through there. So, these are major projects that he has that he's put on his radar and he knows more about this stuff. He spit out stuff about this boiler at Blountville the other day that just amazed me. I, I couldn't even tell you what a boiler is and he told me how long the pipes were and how big they were and what it costs to do that. But, Mr. Hubbard, if you want to talk about it, um, they've got that on their screen.
Yes, I, I can see that you put it up, Ingrid. This was just some of the things that's come up on me and the form in our radar that needs to be done. Uh, not to say when we get three years down the road that that will be a cost. A few of those things is pretty much an actual cost, a lot of them is just based on projects that we see going on now. I could say some might be a little less, some may be a little more. It just depends on what it is when we get there. But this is some of the needs that we've came up with in the next five years that nearly, really need to be addressed as far as our total school system is concerned.
And these projects are in addition to our normal, everyday renovation projects. So, um, this is just the five-year plan to get the major projects accomplished.
I, I do have one question about that, um, and it's probably in here somewhere. But I know we talked at the last meeting about that cost estimate for East Pool and I just want to make sure that we're budgeting for, for trying to get that back up and running or doing something about it.
Yeah, I have, it's out on bid right now, Chris Davis and Percerson. That, what we're doing this summer is not, not showing on there, okay?
Okay.
And, uh, that quote I gave you, uh, was a quote from a company and we're putting out the bid. It may be, well, it won't be no more because if, that's already a bid we got. But potentially it could be less, I don't know. But no, that's on the radar to get that, as soon as the bids come in, we will issue that to get that going if you all approve to do it.
Okay, I ju- I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, I, I remembered that, but I want to make sure it was clear, because if we're thinking of capital projects, that's one that definitely something needs to get done. So, thanks, Charlie.
Okay, and I've got, I've got two projects that we're putting out the bid right now. Uh, and that's the third one, we have a bid on it, uh, yet, yesterday. So, I've got three projects that'll be out to bid, uh, by the first of June. We should have all three bids in, I hope. And, uh, we'll know where we stand on those and getting those projects underway as quick as we can.
Charlie, where do we stand, where do we stand on the bid for the roof at Indian Springs?
Uh, we have a pre-bid there, uh, next week. Next Tuesday, I have a pre-bid, architects already dropped the plans up, submitted them to me. And in the following week, we will open up bids. And then I've already got a list of, uh, from the architects, about five contractors that have requested the plans. So, it looks like we've got about, uh, five, at least right now, five contractors that's interested in bidding that project. So, uh, within the next two weeks, we'll know exactly what that bid comes in at.
Is, is that one that will be completed before the start of the next school year?
I'm sorry, I, you was a little muffled, Mr. Jones.
Is, is that project one that will be completed before the start of the next school year?
Yeah, as soon as we award the bid, it might, I hope to have it finished before school would start. But, uh, as soon as we can get the word, we'll award the bid and as they can get going with it, we'll get it done as soon as possible, okay? It may fall into a little bit of August, I don't know, just depending on how long they feel like they have a timeline on it.
Thanks, Charlie.
Charlie, what about the, uh, pool at East High School, how's that coming?
Uh, we've got that out to bid right now, uh, Chris Davis has put that out. We've got a pre-bid set for it in a couple of weeks. And, uh, uh, one company's done come and give us a quote, which I've gave to you all at the last meeting. So, uh, we'll see how the bids come in, if we get anything less. And that will be, we'll get started on it as soon as the bidding process is taken care of.
The five-year plan is part of that budget. The other part of that budget is our normal renovation projects. And there should be a sheet included in your budget that shows that. But, um, here's the list of our normal, what we call normal renovation projects. Um, and this list includes those in the first year as well. So, we have a little over $3 million in projects that are slated for 2021. Um, some of them we may not recognize, but they're there if we need them. We are requesting funding from the county for those, that budget. And as you know, it was taken off the tax rate and the transfer was taken away. And then they approved the budget that included the transfer last year for 1.6 million. So, we are asking for that funding to be increased to cover the total budget of 3.2 million.
Two years of funding, 1.6 for this year plus 1.6 of new or for next year?
The 3.2 is just new for next year.
I'm not sure I heard your answer, Ingrid, is that 3.2 new, eh, new, uh, funding?
Yes, new funding for 2021.
But it's only a net increase of 1.6 from 1920, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Matthew, that clarified what I was trying to think.
I guess it would be a $3.2 million increase, Mr. Jones, from the zero that we got in 2018 and 19 from the county.
Yeah, ju- yes, but only 1.6 difference of what we asked for last year and what we thought was approved.
Right, right.
Okay, Mr. Lux, did you have any other? Okay, Ms. DeLooch, did you have any other information to present?
That's all I have.
Any further questions for Ms. DeLooch at this time? Okay, if not, then we are concluded with the information that we present, and the regular meeting will start at six-thirty. But rather than have a different, like, we will just pause and I just ask everyone to put your computers on, on mute, and then we will come back and begin the, the business meeting at six-thirty, about fifteen minutes.